So it was kind of rare for me that, and now I'm kind of out of COVID, but the world is different, as we all know. The world is different than it was when we went into war. And some of that is going to affect what we do as a downline, unfortunately. But it's also reality, right? So, yeah.
You want to go over what you knew or what?
No, I know what I know. So basically, we're just going to cover some topics today. Each one of the gals is going to talk, just introduce the team to you. I'm Darren Hurst, I'm the team coordinator. And interesting thing about all this, I've been in the Scottsdale Chorus for 33 years. I never did anything having to do with region stuff before. I've been here last, like, how did this stuff happen, right? I just went, I did my thing, right? I didn't know what happened. But the reality is, there is a whole lot of stuff happening behind these that none of us know about, right? And we don't really want to care because we want to come and do our hobby and we want to come and sing. But the reality is, is that there's volunteers, people who are unpaid, who are spending hours and hours pulling this stuff together. And it's intimidating and scary. But it's also makes us so we can have any bell like this that's so fun. So I'm going to introduce our team, each one of them, then say a little bit. And then we're going to go over the budget. And the budget is going to show you why we have to make the changes that we're about to make, okay? So introducing the team, communications is not here. I mean, it's on the fiction.
Why does she have that?
Kirby Cass in a please is our director's coordinator. So she walked our directors weekend, they had time alone together, which was really, really awesome. We will continue to do that in the future. Education is Leah, who Leo put this stuff in. Events coordinator, we still have an open spot for events coordinator. What we did was, we did split that position so that it should be easier. We have, actually Patricia Glasser is stepping into events for the region. And we still have an open spot for the other stuff. But that would be like doing this event, doing some of the other events that we have. But so we've tried to make it way less scary, which I know it sounds scary, but it isn't. Finance is Robin Haddick. Robin is coming off the team and Judy Moore is coming on the team. But Robin has gone above and beyond to really help us out while Judy is transitioning. She's mentored her, amazing, it's been fantastic. Marketing is Claudia Cannon. She manages our fantastic website and all of our marketing. She's a whiz doing that stuff. Membership is Bev. Teach track of all of our numbers, how our region is doing. Oh, yeah, you need the law. We just want to remind everybody that there are shadowing opportunities. If you've ever been interested, we're really trying to get people to be following behind us, right? I can only do this for a certain amount of time. All the rest of these women can only do this for a certain amount of time. So we really need people to step into these roles so our region can continue to run. But we're very committed to mentoring. So if you think it's something that you're interested in, we're going to help you get there, we're not just going to dump you in. What happened through COVID was, there was nobody really there to help us because everything shut down. So we just jumped into all of this. And we've made some mistakes because we didn't know. But that's okay, we're learning, right? It's all about learning, so. Anyway, all right. Oh, okay, it's Leah's turn.
Oh, all right, I'm ready.
Leah is going to talk about education.
All right. First of all, I'd like to talk about the Golden Touch, which is fairly new. It started out as, so what was formerly known as law. Learn our way, we are now calling it the Golden Touch. To try to put Golden West Region, put our touch into it. So here's a quick overview. Do you want to improve your directing skills? Or if you've never directed, would you like to know more about how to direct? Number one, this class is for everyone. Those who currently direct a chorus, regardless of the level of your chorus. Those who are section leaders and/or assistant directors, or would like to be. Those who would like to try directing and see what it's all about. Those who would love to spend the day just singing for those who need a chorus to direct. At this time, it will be held once a year, rotating between three states. Each year, there will be a new song, a ballad, or an up to. At this time, we have three levels. Those who are currently a frontline director. Those who are or have been assistant director and/or a section leader and have directed a chorus outside of Sweet Outlines. And those who have never directed before. The class runs all day and you'll bring your own lunch by the end. So there'll be more info about that. We do have one scheduled September 16th in here in San Diego. And we have our Fab, I just call them the Fab Core. This is the team that is doing the Golden Touch. We have one person left, but Sally. Sally, I think she should get to be there for. Denise Briderhoff, who I think left. Bev. And Leslie Dolling. So we have two of our Fab Core here. Summer Seminar, you can see, oh, I skipped down. Summer Seminar, we've got Caitlin Casco, you know, coming next year. So check her out, she's awesome. And Von McKibben will be the Seminar Chorus Director. And then you can see the dates for 2025. And Becky D. is Gloria and Jenna. And then also 2021 has, does things like stage days and quartet matching. So when they have things coming up, we will see more about that. We also, Arrangers Program is under education and Susan Kaylee is the coordinator for that. And then also at the regional contest, there is an education component there. I haven't even saw Nancy Maws at the education. Yeah, there was more than one person there. I think Nick Knox, I know Nick Knox is there, Nancy.
Her whole curriculum is on the website.
Her whole curriculum is on the website, she was pretty awesome. So there is that component. So if you, and I got that idea from Kim Vaughn. So if you have an idea about someone fabulous to bring you into that, let me know and I will reach out to them. That's it for education.
So the Director Certification Program really is education and it's actually under education. The thing that I'm really pushing on this is that Region 21 is so very lucky. We currently have two choruses that are in the process of doing auditions for directors. And they're both, I mean, like, really currently, like, in the next week or so, going to be making chorus decisions on who they're going to bring to stand in front of them. Region 12 has eight positions open. Not just eight positions open, but they have four directors that want to retire. We are so lucky. And we got this way, not because of anything I did, but because of everything you guys have been doing up to this point. The thing with the Director Certification Program, there's a lot of you that have taken the class, A class, all the classes, four classes, not in this region, are interested in learning about the DCP. I need to know who you are. We need to start making sure that if a director takes a fall and has to have shoulder surgery, because she can't wave her arms at the moment. Maybe. Is there somebody that can go to Tucson for two weeks? They'll find a place for you to sleep, they'll feed you, they'll water you, and you will make sure, you will make sure that their chorus is doing the things that their director currently wants. But right now, I understand, I think I've got two people in the program. But when Lori said, how many of you in the Scottsdale Chorus have gone through the DCP program and not here anywhere? There must have been 11 hands that went up. I was shocked. I was really shocked because I didn't know who any of them were. So if you have people that have been through the program, that need to take another class, that need a refresher, that are interested in some way in helping out our directors, please email me, talk to me here, I'll give you my phone number. My email is really easy. It's kirby.cass@region21.org. We really, really need to continue the process of taking care of those that stand in front of us every day, even when we call out sick. They're still there. I remember Kim Vaughn, Tom Holbert telling me that, can you hold this? Telling the effects, telling me the chorus, that this is how the chorus looked. But in reality, this is how it looks. And this right here is our director. The director carries the weight of the entire chorus. We have to do what we can to make sure that this person is, if they need our assistance, that we can provide it, if not in the same chorus, but from Albuquerque. But from Harbor Lights area, but from San Diego. If somebody needs help, we need to be able to be there to help them out. So I'm really going to start pushing the program, reaching out to the directors, asking them, please tell me who in your chorus has had an interest. And this isn't anything that's going to take off immediately, but it is something that ties back into Golden Touch. Because if you need, you need to direct a chorus, this is your last step. Well, we're going to provide you that chorus for you to direct. And you're going to have all day to practice. And the chorus's responsibility is to pay attention to you. And then if I'm up there directing and I'm done, and she comes up and directs, this is a different director. So now, our focus has to change to that person. But we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to take care of them. Region 12 sort of scared the pants off of me when I was there a month ago for their contest. I could not get over how many directors had retired and were wanting to retire. So let's not have that happen here. Yes, ma'am?
Question, so for a newbie like me, how long does it take to become a director from zero? And can everybody do it? Or is it the kind of thing where you probably should be musically gifted and know how to read music and, you know, have had some secondary education in it or something? Like, can you kind of speak a little bit to who is a good candidate to become a director?
Any Sweet Outline in the world is a good candidate to become a director. And honestly, it doesn't make any difference, your skills or your lack of skills. Everybody starts at one, everybody. These women, these men that stood, stand up in front of your chorus, they didn't wake up in the morning and say, I'm a director today, and step in front of a chorus. They were taught. We taught them. Our former directors taught them. Pam Pisit, Lori Leifert, Kim Vaughn. All of our directors teach more directors to become better directors, to become 700 directors. So if you have an interest, this is an educational program. You don't have to decide, gosh, I'm going to go through the Director's Program and a week later, I'm going to become a director.
Leah?
You know, it depends on you. It depends on how much you can take on. And we'll assign a proctor to you. So somebody that can take you all through all the steps and have to take it, oh, mentor. We'll assign a mentor to you, you'll take the test, and they will be your hand and guide. So you don't really have to, like, try to squeeze this in a month. Some people, it takes six months, some people, it takes a year. It depends on what's happening in your life.
Got a couple more questions.
Yes.
Is there a fee for the materials? I know there used to be, and what is it?
Yes, and I have no idea.
Okay.
Last check it was like a hundred or 125.
Okay.
There was a question, did a question get answered back there or here?
What was the answer to the question about the fee?
125, we think, I'll find out.
Yeah, it's on the website for SAI.
So, and just so you know, Leah went through the Director's Program. She's not a director. But this is good if you're a section leader, if you want to be a section leader, if you're a tape listener, or if the director called out sick and you're the highest ranking person in the chorus. How often does that happen? It's like, okay, you, you get to come up and direct the Scottsdale Chorus. We don't have anybody else tonight. And that does happen. So please, please reach out to me, let me know how we can help you, how we can get you started. And I promise you, we will do our best.
Okay. Can you hear me? I'm so froggy, I'm sorry. What we've learned in the last year is that the most important thing to you all, all the chapters, for your marketing efforts seems to be the partnership between marketing and membership. Coming back from the pandemic, we've all had our challenges in getting our people back on the risers and in growing our choruses back if they've shrunk in size, or re-engaging those members that are just away from us for now. So when I've gone out and talked to the chapters or done Zoom meetings with the chapters, this is the most often asked for area of help that your chapters need. And I want to tell you that we're there to help you with that. I'm here to help you with that. You may recall that we did a live presentation last year called Marketing for Membership. I did that on Zoom for many of you, many of the chapters. Some of you weren't quite ready to do it. I can do it for you again if you want to repeat it with different people or, now I've added to the curriculum. Or if you have, never had it done before, I'm glad to do that. But the importance of that particular effort is that what I say to you first of all is you need to know your chorus personality. Now of all times is for everyone in your chorus to come together and really have a homogenized, a unified mindset about who your chorus is. What's your chorus personality? What's your chorus culture? What are your primary goals? What do you want to do? And then marketing can really step in and help you. And it can help you in either very simple ways or very aggressive ways because everybody's got different abilities to roll out these marketing plans. But we have no lack of ideas and no lack of information to give you if you just want to ask us. So please, just ask us and we will help you. But we'll also ask you some real key questions about your chapter before we ever get started. I want to talk to you too about the leadership class, which kind of grew out of the marketing efforts because we could see that everybody's so challenged with their volunteer time. And everybody's so challenged in defining their roles sometimes within their internal leadership, that we really needed to provide some extra help for you so that you could get some leadership training. And this would really help your chapters get over that burnout that you all feel from having people being so overburdened. So we're currently running our eight segment leadership class. We've just finished our third segment. Next Sunday night is our fourth segment. I'm just going to go out on a limb, Darren, and say that if anybody that's currently in the program, when they get their link next week, wants to invite anybody else from their chapter to attend, this would be the Sunday night to come and sit in because it's Mike Mitchell, who has worked with the region, he's worked with Positively Acapella, he's worked with individual Sweet Outlines in our region on leadership training. And of all of the curriculum that's going to be presented through this eight segment course, this is probably the most powerful segment because it's called the Five Dysfunctions of a Management Team. So what it does in that hour to hour and a half, it's not at all punitive, it's not at all tense, it's not at all conflict driven. What it tells you in an hour and a half is what five things you really need to address so that your team, all in alignment, all kind of on the same page, everybody moving in the same direction. So who's in the leadership class that's here today? Okay, so you can look around the room and you can see that there are people that are for sure going to be there Sunday night. I'm going to send out some information next week to all the chapters. And if you want to pick up on that link and attend just pro bono, great. And you may get so excited that you enroll for next year. Okay. Over the last two years, the asset that we have built that has been the most expensive thing we've done, as well as I think the most fruitful thing we've done, is our Region 21 website. So this is an area that's going to continue to become more and more of an instrument for you that you'll depend on. I mean, I think you already are starting to see that it's made it so much easier to do so many other things. And if you want to shadow in any area in marketing, this would be the place to step up now and learn about all the different components in running a Wix website, which is what we have. And I would very much like to hear from you because we have not only maintenance things to do every month, month to month, but we also want to start adding to the content and developing more features to help all the chapters. Coming up in the next, over the summer, we want to encourage you to get back in there and start posting your events. You've got shows coming up, you've got sing outs coming up, you've got fundraisers coming up. And some of you have jumped right in and you know how to post. If you've forgotten how to post, let me know and I'll teach you again how to post. But we need to get your events up on the events calendar. We also need you to now update your personnel. And Leah, our new communications coordinator, sent out a database three or four weeks ago that we've kind of just let start filling up as you'd had all your installations and your boards and your management teams have turned over. But next week, I'm going to really start pushing you, if you haven't gotten that information, onto that spreadsheet, to get it onto the spreadsheet. And we need pictures of anybody that we don't have pictures of. And it's, why is this important? Why do you think this is important? That it's there on the regional website?
It's our best communication tool.
It's a great communication tool. What else?
Image to the public.
Our image to the public, our image to new singers. Every single one of your chapters is featured on this website. With all that's happening organically in our region that's message driven, people are going to our website. I see the analytics every month. And if they want a chorus in Riverside, California, they're going to find Inland Empire. But you want them to see who the correct director is, who the manager team or the president is. You want them to have up to date and current information about you, what your chorus is like, what your personality is like, when you meet, every week. And then we're finally going to get the quartet submissions up. Why did that take so long when we had no pictures? Because we had no contest. But this year, we did get quartet pictures. So that's pretty much three quarters of the way done. So now that Summer Seminar is over, we will start to build out that quartet page. And then hopefully, we will go on to somewhat of a gig share system where people can actually contact our website. They need a happy birthday, I'll say Riverside again. We need a happy birthday song in Riverside, California. Is there a quartet that can do it? And the website will be that referral and we'll have some kind of money sharing scheme to go with that. Any questions about marketing? Yes? Next Sunday night at 6:30 Pacific daylight time. Okay. Claudia, and Claudia mentioned how membership and marketing go hand in hand and they really do. Claudia knows her stuff really well. Okay, talk louder. Claudia knows her stuff really well in the marketing part. And, you know, I have learned so much from her. I'm a membership coordinator and I work more in the, oh. The inside, you know, from who you are as a chorus and what you need and why it's so important that we need every single one of you to continue to stay a member because we love all of you. And where would our choruses be when everybody leaves? So I'm not going to go into everything that we do, but I do reach out to all the membership coordinators in the chapters. So, but that doesn't mean any of you can't reach out to me as well. So I just have a few metrics here because Claudia's taught me that we really need to make sure that we have our data and we use it in the right way. So during the timeframe of last year's fiscal year, which was May 3rd of 2022 to April 15th of 2023, those of you who were at International in Phoenix last fall were able to see all of the people who are 50 and 60-year members, not just from that year, but from previous years that didn't have their opportunity to walk across the stage and be recognized by everyone in our organization. And Region 21 had 11 members who did that. So we celebrated that with all of them. This year also, Sweet Outlines had the Nike Sound of their recruitment of new members campaign. And they had little contests throughout the year. I know many of our choruses did participate in them. And by random draw, we had two winners in our region. Harbor Lights received $1,000 for the show and cheer. And yay! And then we just, Ex Quartet received $250 for Valentine's from Adlines. And they only got $250 because it was four quartets that were drawn and they had to divide the money. So we're very proud of our two recipients. And the biggest thing that I cheer for is that we did have progress here in our 16 choruses. Eight choruses achieved a percentage increase in numbers, which is really great. And then we have, we had 13 choruses that added new members. So thank you, keep up your efforts. Please contact me with anything that you have a question about. And as I keep telling the membership coordinators, if I don't know the answer, I will find it for you. Thanks.
Okay, so we're looking at the finance portion of this, which could be really dry. We've simplified it a great deal just so you can really see the bottom line numbers that we need you to see. My background is in business. I've been a business owner for 30 years. My last company I sold had 250 employees. So when I look at Sweet Outlines, I look at it as a business. A business can't be profitable unless it's doing the things to make itself profitable. So we have been losing money, and we're going to show you that badly, badly. And we're going to show you very clearly why that is and what effect that's going to have on Regional when we have Regional coming up. Right now, we smell like that answer, but the reality is the reality. So we have to look at it. All right, so Robin's going to talk about the numbers and then we're going to visit a little bit more about it.
Thanks. And Nick, I don't know, you might want to go to the numbers. So.
Louder.
I'll talk louder, I'll talk louder than Robin. We put together some graphs, so there's this little picture rest. So really, what it is, is the money coming in to the region and those are from four major main sources. The first one is the regional assessment. So the green bar or the yellow bar, there's like up there. The green bar is the regional assessments for the dues that we get from each member in Region 21, okay? And then the purple bar is the regional convention, AET pos, SBT pos, you guys know what I'm talking about, the all expense tickets that you pay when you go to Regional. The yellow bar is Summer Seminar, which is this event that we have here. And then the red bar is really what I want me to concentrate on is the total. So how much money did we take in over the past six years is represented right here on a bar graph. The red lines are the money taken in from those major events. So I want to ask someone to mind your things with the major events, okay? So this is all the income. And you can see, 2027 had $73,000, then we went up to almost $100,000, money coming in from the major events. Then we dropped during the pandemic. 25, 18, 16, and then now we're back up to about 70, but we haven't really recovered, right? And actually, we really didn't recover. Money coming in, money going out, same for the major events. Same color, but we don't have assessments. So we only take assessments or the dues, regional dues coming in, right? So again, purple line is the region, yellow line is Summer Seminar, red line is what I'm going to concentrate on, the total expenses that we have. So 2027 versus 2017, 18, 19, and then we dropped, right? We didn't have many expenses, we zoomed a little bit, we did some creepies, and we gave money back, actually, to the choruses with some incentives and make sure you guys are keeping your choruses going. But the red line is the bottom.
I just want to add something to what Robin said there. So that number showing $80,000 in expenses, right? That didn't tell the whole picture. We actually got, so the Albuquerque Convention Center gave us our money back because we didn't go there. And they didn't have to do that. There was something nice that they did, that was $12,000 that we got back that we probably should have lost. Secondarily, the hotel in Albuquerque, because we all know.
We got stuck in the elevator.
It was because it took off, right? The hotel was completely unprepared for. So we were able to negotiate 56. So we ran into negotiate 5600 dollar credit. We owe the hotel 12,000 dollars. They gave us a 5600 dollar credit back. When you look at that 80, that number's really 86,000 dollars that we spent. So when we took in 70,000, we spent 86. So that's the real reality.
All right, and then this, this kinda shows like the line even the middle is whether, you know, the zero line. And then how much did we make those years or how much did we lose those years? And this is all the major events again. So we always made the assessments, so that's the green line. And net on Regional is the purple line. So one year we lost a grand or a couple grand, and next year we gained 5,000. Then looking at the purple line to go across the years and look at the one from this year, we lost 15,000 dollars lost, but we spent more than we took in for that event. You know, so the bottom line is that, you know, we've been doing okay up until the pandemic and now we're having more expenses and we're not taking in as much money. People aren't going to the events like they should. So we have to kinda think outside the box. And this is what Darren's gonna talk about. One last thing, financially, I wanna make sure you guys know. So this is the total current assets across all those years, which means what's our bank account have in? Including, we've got some money market accounts that are making some money and whatever. But if you see at 2018, it was about 212,000 dollars. And then it's gone down across the years to now we have 165,000 dollars. That was at the end of April of this year. So, you know, we take that and if you keep going like that and that making changes, we're not gonna have like things to, money to do for some of this stuff. So Darren's gonna talk, but I don't think the correct question is.
What were your big expenses over COVID?
What were our big expenses over COVID?
Yeah, I mean, like, I mean, for our chorus, for San Diego, for instance, you know, we weren't renting venues for shows, we weren't paying coaches to come in, so our expenses were very low. And then we did video shows, our virtual shows, and we actually, you know, made some money.
From a regional perspective, we took in the assessments and we gave it back to you. So our major expenses from a regional bank account was, we tried to just kinda keep it even and give that money back to you so that you can promote the coaching and everything they did, buy the zoo.
We gave a thousand dollars. Yeah, we gave a thousand dollars to each chorus, plus 10 dollars per member to every chorus over the course of that.
Right, you got, maybe you don't know that.
Yeah, I do.
So our major expenses weren't much, but we kinda kept it even. And you can see that here in the 2020, 2021, 2022, it went from 183 to 183, we kept it even, but now we're dropping and we can't, we can't keep dropping. So with that, Darren is gonna talk about some action ideas that the regional management team is taking. I'm hoping that all makes sense. We tried to make it simple, but.
Okay.
Thank you, Robyn.
So it's not to make you feel bad, guys, right? I mean, we have solutions here. And after I talk about Regional here in a second, we're gonna talk about some of the out of the box solutions we're thinking about. Maybe we have to do conventions differently than we've been doing conventions. This event here at the hotel, if you looked at the bottom line that Robyn was showing you, we lose money on Summer Seminar to a very large extent by doing it in a hotel like this. So what else can we do? Where else can we hold these events so that we still get the benefit of all the education? We can still be together and have fun, but we're not having to spend money at the rate that we're spending it. Same thing with Regional. So, okay, we're used to Regional being exactly the same way as Lou always says, we're very spoiled in Region 21. We've had fabulous venues, we've got nice hotels to stay in, but that is not sustainable on a long-term basis, right? So we're looking at other things like what about, I'll talk about it a little sooner now, not later, I'll talk about Regional in a second, but what if we combined it with another region and had our contest with another region? International is mediable to that, right? What if we combined with two regions and held our Regional with another region? Maybe we hold it in a different location. Maybe we say in Australia, when I was at International, I talked to the woman from Australia, she's like, we don't do hotels anymore. We're out of the hotel business because it's the hotel part of running these events that kills you. That's the absolute killer because they require you to spend a certain amount of money. So, okay, maybe that's not feasible anymore. So that's what we're looking for. We're looking for ideas and ways to think outside the box, still have a great time, still do all the stuff you love to do, still be together and sing, but not to the great expense that we're doing and not to kill our membership with how much it costs to do it, right? A combined Regional might very well generate a much lower AET because we'd be sharing the cost among two or three regions, right? And International has said to us, hey, write up a plan and send it to us, let's talk about, right? So they are, they are, you know, really very positive to it. So just going on to Regional now, so we raised assessments by 10 dollars per year, per member, that brings us 6,000 dollars. Yay! But it's not helping a lot. I know it hurts you guys and I know nobody likes to see increases, but that was where that came from. Regional Convention is gonna be in Torrance, California. Before any of us got on this team, everyone, the current team said, we need to be back in California because we've been in Arizona for six years. And then we went to New Mexico, we would've been there for two years. Everyone said we need to be in California. So we will be in Torrance, California at the Marriott Torrance Redondo Beach, which is, they just, we just sent a team there, they checked out that hotel, they were super happy with what they saw. It is gonna be a ballroom. Last year, everybody, right, said, okay, ballroom, it's flat floor. We're looking at how we can manage that. But again, if we build a stage, that adds a giant chunk of cash. So what if we put up screens, right? Again, try to think outside the box so that those of you there sitting in the back of the room can see what's happening on the floor. So those are ideas that we're doing. Regional is gonna be April 10th through 13th, and then we're committed by contract. But again, before any of us came on the team, these contracts were already set. So if we can't get out of it, it is the way that it is. So what that means is our costs are going up because we're in a, yay! So Regional is probably gonna cost about, again, approximate, about 132 for AETs. I know that's a lot and it's a big increase. We didn't raise, we didn't raise AETs this year because we wanted everyone to come. We should have raised AETs. But we wanted everyone to come because it was our first one. So we kept it at 85, right? That's kind of more similar to where it's been. It's gonna be probably 132, potentially even a little higher than that. So sorry about that. But then, after those two years, we've already set a task force to talk to some of these other regions. And Lou and I are gonna, Lou's our competition coordinator, Lou and I are gonna talk with some of the other regions and see, okay, what can we do? And hopefully, as I said, that will help reduce the cost of AETs. Is it gonna go back down to 50 bucks? It's not gonna go back down to 50 bucks. But if we achieve more than 132, hopefully. So the reason we're telling you now is so that you can get ready. It's a year from now, almost a year from now. You can be ready, right? Start saving money, start raising money, all those things that you're gonna need to do to cover the cost of that. Is it gonna be a fabulous event? Absolutely! It's gonna be as great as always what we do, right? But, and, so that's not a concern, it's just the additional cost of it. So Summer Seminar, we talked about that already, looking for different locations. It won't be back in Arizona next year, so we're just, because Regional's gonna be here in California, so we'll go back to Arizona for Summer Seminar. So that's basically kinda what we're talking about, questions about finances. Yes?
What about people who are retired on fixed incomes? You know, if our salary doesn't go up?
I'm sensitive to that, honestly, but I don't know the answer, right? If I'm looking at this from a business perspective, there's been inflation across, right, across our, everywhere, right? And yes, I'm sensitive to that, but by the same token, I can't continue to let us lose at the rate that we're losing because that's gonna drive us down. If we have 165,000 now and we lose another 30,000 next year, you do the math, guys? And then the year after that, we lose another 30,000, we're in deep trouble, right? We can't afford to do that. So, yes, I hear you.
I'm in deep trouble.
I know. I know, and we are sensitive to that. But that's why we're telling you now, so that you can maybe work on fundraisers in your chorus, ways, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know the answer for you, but the reality of the numbers is the reality of the numbers.
But your chorus could do fundraisers specifically to pay for that, so hopefully the cost will be reduced.
Yep.
If you were to do it combined with another region, would you be competing against that other region too?
No, thank you for asking that. I didn't, I didn't answer that. It would actually, the way International has it set up, is we would still be competing against our own regional members, it would just be a much larger contest. But, and you might even be interspersed, like you might sing with somebody from Region 12 or Regional against them, they might be before or after you. So it'll be interspersed that way, but again, still formulating, right? You still have to think this through. I just wanted you to know that, happy. But yeah, you'd only be competing against Region 21 groups. Yes?
Darren, can I just share a little bit about the sponsorship ideas?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah? Thanks, Patricia. So Patricia, as I mentioned before, is our events coordinator for, specifically for Regional. And she went with the team that went to California to check out the facility.
Hi, everyone. So just a little quick background, I actually come from the nonprofit event world, so I put on events where we sell tickets, but the major way that we raise money for a nonprofit event is to find sponsors, right? Who come in, you guys are all familiar with this. We're a nonprofit organization, right? So my thought is, let's treat Regional like it's an event. We're selling tickets to people to attend, but let's go out and find sponsors, right? People who just wanna support our organization. You know, we'll get creative, we'll come up with sponsorship levels, here's what you get for being a sponsor at these different amounts. You might get tickets to the event, you might get, you know, advertising, whatever it might be, right? So we're gonna kind of get creative with that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, start thinking, you know, who are businesses that might wanna support and be present at a Sweet Adeline event, right? The costume companies, the jewelry companies, makeup companies, any companies that are interested in advertising to women. There's gonna be several hundred women in the room, you know? So start thinking about that, about people you could reach out to. The other wonderful thing, the companies typically who come in as sponsors, you know, they wanna support the organization typically because of a personal relationship, right? So you go and you talk to them and you say, somebody you know who's a business owner, say, you know, I am a part of this amazing educational organization that supports women and it's, you know, international, but this is going to be our regional event and we could really use your support. And here's, you know, here's why we do what we do and here's what we bring to women and how we support each other and do all that fabulous sales pitch. And all you gotta do is speak from the heart, right? You just tell them what it means to you about, you know, being a Sweet Adeline, right? And, oh, and the live feed as well, yeah. So that's the approach. You don't have to think about, oh gosh, I'm asking somebody for money. You know, just share, right? When you're talking about how much you love your chorus and your singing, just share that love with them and they will pick up on that and hopefully wanna turn around and support that. And those businesses can use their advertising dollars for these types of sponsorships. You know, most of the time it's considered advertising in the world. So that's kinda where it comes from on their business end. So that's kinda what we're thinking. So start thinking that way, talk to people you know, you know, who might have businesses or something like that, spread the word with your chorus members. And then.
The live feed.
So the live feed is. Live feed, right. So we're looking at getting a live feed going again for this year, thinking about trying it maybe on YouTube. But one of the things we'd love to do then as part of that is sell advertisements for them. Yep, what we're getting at, yeah. And shout outs and things like that. So advertisements could be on there from businesses, from individuals, from whoever as well, so.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have you thought about small towns and possibly for the performances and contests, renting out of a theater, a large theater?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there has to be supporting hotels in the area to support the, at least members coming. Even if we don't do events at the hotels, we can still rent a facility because that's what, that's what they're doing in Australia. They rent a facility and then they just tell everybody, you guys get your own hotel. So they don't do hotels at all anymore. And that has, of course, they pay over 200 dollars for their AETs, so, but they don't, so they don't support any of that. So yes, that is one of the outside the box things that we're thinking about. And then choruses would book whatever hotels they book in, they would stay wherever they wanna stay. They either potentially would get their own transportation to in front of the event or, you know, there's a lot of different ways we can look at, absolutely. Any other questions? Okay. Yes, yes, yes.
How many choruses and how many members do we have at this time and how many attended Regional?
So, great question. So we have 613 members in our region. Of those, there's about 50 that are dual members, so we're not getting double dues from them, right? We're only getting dues from 500 and some odd. 500 people attended Regional, which was fabulous. We're hoping for 700 at, up in Torrance because y'all live here, you're friends and family, so we're hoping for a bigger group. So that should help offset some expenses. But if you think about Region 21 and where Sweet Adlines were pre-COVID, right, we had probably 800 to 1,000 people in our region, right? So if we're down to 600, again, it's just all about the math.
How many courses?
How many live courses? Uh, there's 16, 16, yeah, 16 courses, yeah. So, and most are, I mean, we've got a couple of large ones, but most are small.
The core, the, uh, the number of choruses did not diminish, but the population of the choruses did diminish.
So, yes, so we have the positivity that we had, choruses that gained members in the last year, which was fabulous with the Ignite the Sound, but really overall the attrition was a pretty big number, right? Yeah.
Is there a plan to address that attrition and build membership back up at a regional level?
Yeah, I mean, that's what Claudia works on, that's why she does marketing with all the courses, but it really comes back on you guys, you know, Sweet Adlines has reinstated Ignite the Sound, but it still comes back on each one of your choruses to find the members. We can provide the marketing support, we can send people and help you, we can do all of those things, but ultimately you have to buy into and have to try to find members, you know, on your own, you know? And I think it's a great time, it's a great time to find members. Women are looking for areas to plug in, right? We just have to find them and let them know that we're out here. A lot of people are brand new and they found us on Meetup or they found us because they saw us someplace. I mean, there's, there's tons of new people, it's pretty cool. Any other questions? Yes, everybody good? Okay. LeAnn?